SP 1122. A special permit for every patient in the facility to condition their review of SP 1122. SP 1122 is issued by Hawaii Volcano Circus, the longest extension of this commission. They have a performing arts educational center, 2.5 acres of land, and a larger 10 acre site situated within the state land use agricultural issue. The properties are located within adjacent, with no property in adjacent to the west side of Waikiki State Subdivision, where you can section of west, Koha, Pohawak, Telewood, and Keho, Tumashu, TMK 12994, and 12385. So, our staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can direct the commission's attention to our presentation. As mentioned, this is our next application is initiated by the planning director. It was actually a hearing regarding non-compliance with conditions of approval on special permit number 1122, and we were moving towards revocation of that permit. At our last hearing, May 3rd, the planning commission voted to continue that matter. The planning commission continued the revocation hearing until December 6th, 2012, to allow the applicant to submit an amendment under the existing special permit. The applicant submitted the amendment to special permit number 1122 on November 7th, 2012, and it was accepted by the planning department on November 29th, 2012, after additional information requested by the planning department was submitted. Since the May 3rd, 2012, planning commission hearing date, planning department has not received any complaints regarding operations at Hawaii Volcano Circus. There were inquiries made regarding the farmers market and how long they are allowed to operate, but that's all we've received. The applicant has submitted information regarding the unpermitted structures and how these will be resolved. This is this particular matrix information that was provided to the applicants. It does not have a date on it, but it has a number four in the corner. We've only received two correspondence regarding this issue today. Another one was submitted and has in opposition, and they have some issues that they're requesting the commission to look at. And again, I don't see a date on that particular letter. The planning department is recommending continuance of this particular agenda item at the call of the planning director as the department continues to work with the applicant to process the recently submitted amendment application. So, we're requesting that the revocation, this planning director initiating application be continued as we work through the amendment application and consider it separately. If everything goes well with the amendment, then most likely we can withdraw the revocation. Things don't go so well, that's all still on the table, and so we can bring that up at another hearing. Just for your information, again, the reason that brought us here was non-compliance of several conditions of the permit. The majority of the issues have been resolved in regards to we haven't been having public performances, we haven't been having complaints of noise or anything like that. We still have this issue in regards to the unpermitted structures that needs to be resolved with the applicant and the planning department. So, the planning department is working with the applicant to set up a site inspection in which several departments will be conducting a site inspection. Among them would be the Department of Public Works in regards to permit information as well as real property tax in regards to the taxing issues of the structures. And the planning department. In this particular matrix that was submitted by the applicant, they do put possible resolutions, but again, we need to work through these. And they refer on the second and third page, they identify the structures by numerical, I'm sorry, alphabetical letters. So, you can kind of refer to which structure they're referring to on the matrix. With that, that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
During today's revocation process, we set forth in May the 6th, come back by December 6th, which is today. Is there a timeframe or do we say?
Well, the planning commission has the authority. We have received the application that was requested by the planning commission that they submit. It does, as mentioned at the last hearing, it does take a little bit of time to process that. And if they submitted it in a timely manner, we still needed a little bit more time. We just didn't know what the planning commission's schedule was after January, so we couldn't identify a later hearing date. At this point, if everything goes well, we, the date was November 29th, we need to bring it back to commission within a certain timeframe. But the other issue is that there may be other matters that may put this agenda item on hold until they resolve. For example, they're requesting as part of the amendment to increase the enrollment to the charter school. What's happened is in review of that in comparison to the traffic engineer trip guidelines, it appears to trip the need for a traffic report. So, that may be requested prior to coming to the hearing. Again, similar situation as we had in the first agenda, so that they can work through that and we can get a recommendation as to traffic issues. And then secondly, we have these issues regarding the unpermitted structures that we need to work through. We may be, we may be able to work through it within that 90-day frame. If not, we need to ask for a little bit more time to resolve those issues before coming back to the commission.
Okay, so the applicant has been doing their part and working with the planning department?
Yes.
And they've been abiding by the rules?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have a question. So, with the continuance, then are we asking for a continuance for 90 days and then going there? Or is that open-ended?
You could do that, and then we could come back and ask if things aren't resolved at that time, we could ask for another continuance, or we can just keep it open-ended and allow the special permit amendment to take its course. And that would be coming to the commission hopefully within the 90-day timeframe. If not, it may be a little after that to allow the applicants to resolve and work with the planning department resolving several issues.
Okay, our counsel, Ryan, please.
Regarding the date, the requirement for a date for this type of continuance or motion to continue, you can continue to a certain event, which would be the ones on the screen behind everyone, or you can set forth these certain, both are important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, okay. It's down, and I think you guys are all sworn in. Can you read right now? Do you affirm to tell the chief in front of the winter planning commission today?
Well.
Thank you. So, you guys are all, just go ahead.
Okay, thank you. When, back in May of 2012, I started our presentation quoting from John Lennon's, watching the Wills song about, you know, there are no problems, only solutions. And I can think that you can see in terms of our progress that we are trying to find solutions. I hate to muddy the waters, but I'd like to throw in a third possibility for the commission's consideration. That is to dismiss the revocation proceedings and allow us to go on with the amended special permit application. Because I can understand from the planning department's perspective, it's a different song. It's hammer time. So, they're using that revocation as a hammer for us, and I can understand that. However, it still is, you know, different processes and procedures, and I think it's cleaner if we dismiss the revocation because we met the condition of turning in that amendment application, then allow us the process to go through the process of working with the planning commission with respect to that amended application. One of the concerns we have is because this is a small charter school, is that fundraising is their life's blood. And we haven't had any complaints since May. We haven't had any functions since May where we could actually get or earn money in these kinds of fundraising activities. That's one of my concerns. Having said that, what I would like to do is introduce Jenna Way, who has a statement regarding the proposal, and I'd like Jenna to address that. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. I forgot to mention it earlier before we proceeded from our break, but we will not have forum for the geothermal initiative. So, if you are here to testify or if you are waiting for that, we will not be seeing that. We will not have forum. Commissioner Hua Shi will not be, will not, he already accused himself, right?
You will be accepting testimony, but?
Yes. Pursuant to the current, recent amendments to the sunshine law, we are required to accept testimony oral and written submitted for today's agenda, our agenda at the meeting. All of the testimonies submitted will be transcribed and presented to all the commissioners prior to the reconvening of the special permission.
I'm sorry, go ahead. So, please state your name, where you reside, and maybe you?
My name is Jenna Way, and I reside in California, Seaview Estates. And I am the executive director of Hawaii's Volcano Circus. We own and operate the Space Performing Arts Center. I've held this position since April of 2007. I apologize for not attending the meeting on May 3rd when this matter first came before you. I was on the mainland due to a family emergency. With me today among Mr. Paul Leloy is Graham Ellis, the board chair of Hawaii's Volcano Circus. I'm thankful to Graham for representing our organization in the last meeting. However, I want you all to know that I am the person responsible for all the decision-making and all the day-to-day operations of Hawaii's Volcano Circus, not Mr. Ellis. When we were here in May, you told us to get the amendment to our special use permit submitted by December, and we did. I'm relieved and happy to hear the planning department recommending continuing the revocation proceedings. Thank you to Mr. Darrow and Ms. Lighthead Todd. We support any proposed interim guidelines that might be put into place, and we will have no problems complying with them. Just as we have had no complaints against us since the May meeting, I anticipate no problems operating until we can join you again, I hope in the very near future, to consider our amendment to our special use permit, which we have already submitted. From the time that we received the cease and desist order, we have been working cooperatively with the planning department to solve issues. We fully understand and appreciate their position and are thankful to the guidance that they have given us, which has allowed us to progress towards a solution that meets the needs of all the stakeholders. On behalf of our space community, I especially want to thank Ms. Lighthead Todd for allowing us to continue to house an elementary education program operated by Hawaii Academy of Arts and Science Public Charter School and to operate our weekly farmers market during this time while we are working to finalize our amendment. I cannot, I cannot overstate the importance of the school and the market to our community in Lower Puna. Throughout this matter, we have been very proactive in meeting the needs and addressing the concerns of those who are unhappy with our operation. Immediately following the receipt of the cease and desist order, we held a community meeting to gather input from our extended community, both supporters and detractors. We heard the concerns expressed and implemented the suggestion of one of our neighbors to hold a smaller facilitated meeting with those most severely impacted, our closest neighbors. I was very pleased when 20-some people attended that meeting, held on a neutral ground at a neighbor's house. A professional counselor arranged for by the neighbor hosting the meeting served as a facilitator. In this meeting, we had a detailed discussion and received suggestions from our neighbors about their concerns and suggestions for future operations at Space. We held a follow-up meeting to receive input on a proposal that we had prepared, which later became the foundation of the amendment which we submitted. I believe that these meetings and the dialogues they stimulated were a wonderful thing. In fact, as a result, one of our neighbors who had complaints about us was open-minded enough to accept our offer to join the Space Advisory Committee to give guidance in our decision-making process. I was also favored to assure our neighbors that we intended to take their concerns seriously and were not planning to continue our activities as before. The most frequent complaint we received concerned the level of noise coming from Space during events. Even prior to the cease and desist order, we had taken several steps to reduce the sound coming from Space. They included landscaping around Space, including planting trees, shrubs, and other plants, which when mature will assist in providing a barrier. Installing a sound deflecting wall outside the back door of our pavilion at Space, which our events are held. Installing heavy drapes which could be dropped around the open sides of our pavilion during the events. topping off our ironwood trees, which we've done twice now, which form a barrier between Space and the Seaview subdivision in order to encourage growth and for them to fill in and get more bushy. We're fortunate enough to have two qualified builder designers on our advisory committee. And after collecting detailed data using a decimal meter which we purchased, they went to work designing a noise reduction system. Then it was up to us to find funding for the proposed project. I'm pleased to say that we secured $50,000 for noise reduction at Space. However, receipt of the funds is dependent upon approval of the amendment to our special use permit. More recently, after we retained the services of Mr. Honomus Leloy, we held a stakeholder meeting. At this meeting, we again discussed our proposal for our amendment and our plans for addressing concerns. I have been extremely vigilant and rigid about following the cease and desist order issued to us. Other than the one event which led to May meeting, we've been in full compliance. And please remember, we had concerns ourself about that event and only moved forward in allowing the Village Green Society, who are the landowners of the property on which Space is built, to continue the event after consulting with our attorneys, who advised us that it would not violate the cease and desist order. My intention here is not to blame our attorneys, but to demonstrate the importance we placed on complying with the orders of the planning department. I can't tell you how many times I've had to say no to people requesting to hold events at Space or to hold classes or family gatherings or community meetings. I take the cease and desist order so seriously that I won't even allow anyone to stand or walk around our farmers market strumming their ukulele or playing any kind of instrument because the planning department told me that performing at the market was not allowed. After the May 3rd meeting, the planning director issued a letter to us detailing the conditions under which we would need to operate. Again, I have followed those without exception, and the planning department has received no complaints. However, please understand that we are a small struggling nonprofit organization. And as a result of these restrictions on performances and fundraising at Space in general, we are in a dire financial situation. Critical sources of revenue have been cut off from us. And as you might imagine, income from grants is down too due to more competition for the reduced amount of funds available from government agencies and private foundations. I have cut expenses in every way you can imagine and then more, and we're still struggling. As a last resort, I finally had to cut my own hours. It was the only thing that was left. And even then, there have been times when I haven't been able to pay myself on schedule, resulting in financial hardship for my own family. You know how people refer to being on a shoestring budget? Well, we aren't even on a shoestring budget. We're like on a half of a shoestring that's all frayed out and just a big mess. You know it's bad when you're contemplating laying off your own self, which I've done before. In conclusion, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you and for you to have a chance to meet me. I urge you to dismiss the revocation proceedings and allow us to move forward with the amendment process. I hope you have a better understanding of the links to which we have gone in order to follow the directives of the planning department and to make peace with our neighborhood. Not only do I work in Seaview, I live there too, right across the street from Space. So, Space's neighbors are my neighbors. And I see these people on a daily basis, and I don't want to work and live in a place where there's an antagonistic atmosphere. Please believe me when I say that I can work together with my community and the planning department and that I know we will be able to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Anybody else would like to speak? Any questions, commissioners? Thank you very much. Moving to further testimony. We have four people signed up to testify. Michael Flynn, Dina Smith-Gibbons, Robert Patrici, and Mara Herling. Is there a court to testify? Not here, we'll agree. Okay. Please raise your right hand for those of you who have it. Do you swear to tell the truth in front of the winter planning commission today? Very good. Start with Michael Flynn. Please state your name, where you reside, and you have three minutes. Okay, Dina Smith-Gibbons. And you've already stated your name, so you can proceed in three minutes.
Okay, very good. As a resident of Bally Acres, I am a member of a close knit Ohana that is the lifeblood of Space. Two of my six children are currently training five days a week in circus arts. My 18-year-old daughter, a freshman this year at UH, works part-time at the farmers market on Saturdays. You may recall my daughter Bailey, who bravely spoke at her last appearance before the planning commission in May. That was Bailey's first public speech. She was so thrilled to not only have the opportunity to share her passion for Space and the valuable community services that it provides for her and for others. She was also really excited to have a public forum in which to practice her speaking skills. You see, we are a performing arts center. However, due to the arduous task of coming into alignment with the planning commission requirements, our children are not allowed to perform. That is like asking a bird not to fly. I wish that all of you could observe these children at circus class, which by the way, I invite you all to do. There are children of all ages, stages, and abilities. It's so exciting to watch how they all thrive under the gentle and caring direction of Mr. Ellis. Did any of you attend the Pohawha Holiday Parade this last weekend? Well, we won first prize. We were the largest and most colorful group in the procession. But you know what was the best part about it? We actually had an opportunity to perform, to be in front of the public. You should have seen the excitement on the faces of those children and the miles of smiles of the public admiring and adoring them. Besides the other important services that we provide at Space, such as the weekly farmers market and the Haas Charter School Satellite, we are first and foremost a performance arts community center.
One minute.
These children need to spread their wings and fly. We are all at your mercy right now, and we respectfully request that you dismiss the revocation to our special permit and that we can work together moving forward to help us coming into compliance for the benefit of our community, but most importantly, the benefit of these children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the test fire? You, Robert Patrici. And please state your name, where you reside, and you have three minutes.
Aloha, Robert Patrici. I live in Pohiki, Hawaii for 31 years. And I just, I want to thank the commission for continuing the hearing and giving Space its chances. It's a community model that I think that should be copied. And, you know, we talk, government talks often about the need for sustainability, infrastructure, roads, and all these lacking things in the roads in Puna and all those things that are lacking in Puna. It's true, it's true. And now you have a community group that comes and they provide a market, they provide a school. They provide all of these opportunities without any cost to the government. You know, and take traffic off the road so that traveling. I really just hope you'll really support this model. This is, this is something that I think we should see more of. And so, please work with Space to keep that alive here that they're struggling financially now and that we may lose this because of what's happening. And that would be, that would be a crime. So, please support them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the test fire?
Mr. Patrici. You know, the planning department and county general supports trying to diversify economy, diversify services, and provide other opportunities. The problem that we have with a lot of kind of homegrown operations that have expanded in areas such as Puna is that the expectations of other people who have bought land in subdivisions and built homes, they have certain expectation as to the type of community they're moving into. And they buy an agricultural lot, they think they're an agricultural community, or they buy something that in many cases, Puna people think it's mainly residential purposes that they're purchasing into subdivisions. And when an activity next door starts to grow, starts to create additional traffic in a subdivision, starts to create additional noise in a subdivision, it frequently comes as a surprise to the neighbors or is not welcomed by other people in the community. It may be welcome to the people who frequent the farmers market or use the services, but it frequently runs into problems with the neighbors, which is why it's typically better to come in and apply for the permit first, notify the neighbors as to what you're going to do and the full extent of what you're going to do, than to expand what you're doing beyond what your neighbors are expecting. And then inevitably, the county gets the complaints. And that's exactly what happened here, is that we had an original permit. It expanded far beyond what the original permit was, and then we started getting multiple complaints about noise and traffic from people in the community. So, we walk a delicate balance between trying not to, trying to allow people the time to bring their places into compliance, but also balancing the needs of the rest of the community and the neighbors who are property owners and residents of, in this case, this particular subdivision. But this, this is not unique to this particular application. It's not unique to Puna. This happens all over the island. Sometimes it happens as people are ignorant as to what the limitations are on the use of agricultural land because of the multi-layer state land use regulations as well as county regulations. But the ultimate goal is to both legitimize activities, but also to give notice to the surrounding community as to the extent of the activities and to put, you know, some usually regulations on hours of operation. In some cases, we even have decibel levels and others. We've done things where speakers have to be turned in a particular direction so they're not facing outward from activities. But it's mainly trying to balance what is one segment of the community's need for services against the needs of the surrounding community to have some, you know, quiet enjoyment of their residences and property. And so, sometimes we just want to avoid confrontation. And usually, if the neighbors know that you're there and know what you're going to do, you, when things grow and you haven't gone through a process where you've got a community consent, that's when we end up with confrontation. So, you know, I'm happy that we have the application in, that, you know, we're proceeding along. I'm very happy that they've met with the community, and I'm extremely happy that I haven't had any complaints since the last time because you would be amazed at how much work is generated in our office, not just in Puna, but all over the island by people who complain because the neighbors are doing things that they think are not permitted or not supposed to occur in residential or even sometimes in commercial areas. So, we have to investigate and we have to enforce different regulations. And sometimes it feels like trying to do the square peg and the round hole. The rules and regs that we have in our zoning codes don't necessarily have the flexibility in them that a lot of people would like. in them that a lot of people would like to have. We have a little bit of flexibility with special use permits in some cases, but they aren't. But, you know, it's not our intent to be punitive. It's not our intent to strangle development. It's just basically trying to balance the needs of all centers of the community. I like your performances. I enjoyed you in many parades, but, you know, you have to balance that against the needs of the neighbors. So I think, you know, moving forward and trying to make sure that the neighbors' concerns over noise and powers of operation are handled is that we'll end up with something that's mutually beneficial for everybody.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, I would really be ashamed for this, for the community and for the whole area for this to be logged in some respects. We see in regular community schools and other types of developments that are put into neighborhoods, and they're able to do in their much larger stores geothermal power plants with noise, noise problems. If we can put a geothermal power plant into the middle of a community and that's an permitted use, I don't, I think we should be able to build space into the middle of communities and communities.
Any more questions for the testifier? We have one more testifier. Maura Herling. Please state your name and where you reside, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Maura Herling. I reside in Black Sands Beach subdivision, Kalapata, and I'm the farmer's market manager over at Space. I'm going to talk about our farmer's market and its importance to the community. We help foster a healthy local economy because we require that all vendors sell strictly local goods. Our vendors provide an assortment of products to meet all our customers' needs, whether it's groceries, farm-fresh produce, ready-to-eat meals, baked goods, yard services, home repair, nutritional guidance, licensed massage, cultural demonstrations, local artists, local craftsmen, self-reliance practices, local community organizations, and many other businesses regularly set up in our market. We also hoaxed a swap meet on the second Saturday that helps to recycle slightly-used goods within the community. And people are relying on our market as a local venue for local goods. Over the past few years, our market has grown from five vendors to fifty, to over fifty vendors, forty of which, their businesses rely on our market being open weekly, and they attend every week of the year as their point of contact with the community. An additional fifteen spaces fill up weekly with temporary vendors, and our second Saturday swap meet attracts a dozen or so more vendors. We have an average of five hundred people who visit the farmer's market each week, many of which are shopping exclusively with their food stamp benefits. The availability of the market and our EBT program makes it possible for community members to do their grocery shopping without having to take a thirty-two-mile round trip journey to the nearest grocery store. It's especially important to our residents that are relying on our public transportation because it only passes nearby neighborhoods twice a day, making it a day-long journey to go get your groceries.
One minute.
Many of our customers take pride in doing all their shopping in the local community, and our market makes it possible. Space Market is a valuable asset to our community, providing several part-time jobs and on-the-job training for young adults entering the workforce. It's a family venue where many local families come to spend the day knowing they're in a safe and healthy environment. The market also provides a healthy weekend alternative to drugs and alcohol. My statements speak solely about our farmer's market and don't touch upon the hundreds of people that benefit from other activities at Space. The Seaview Performing Arts Center for Education offers many community benefits, and I hope that we can work together to mitigate any community impacts and keep Space open. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any questions for the last testifier? Okay, thank you. Maybe see it? Okay. That concludes all of the testimony of this commission. And what we have before us is, we have a continuation with the request by the applicant to dismiss the revocation proceedings. That's what we have, the commission has invited us. Is there any one way to entertain the motion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we entertain a motion, just clarification in regards to how we proceed with the applicant from today's agreement, regardless of which way we go. Currently, special permit number one-one-two-two is in effect. It allows certain uses, so those, those conditions are still in effect. There are certain uses that are not allowed, so we just want to be clear on the record as to the fact that the applicants are still under the current permit as it stands now. And then also there is the issue of the farmer's market. It was allowed up to this point today by the planning director. So if we could clarify the situation with the farmer's market from today on.
Okay, to clarify what the applicant wants, what they're asking of the commission. Can you be specific on what you want? Because right now, our director had, did, she had an argument about the farmer market up to this point. So aside from the farmer's market, what else is that that you would like to do? I mean, because I understand you guys are in a financial hardship, you know, and you guys need funding. And this prob, this was, you guys needed funding all these years until we stopped that. So can you let me know, can you let us know what, what your, what kind of use of your, is that probate passed?
I, I don't think the commission with that, you have an existing permit which has certain permitted uses. They continue those permitted uses. Continuation of the farmer's market was an administrative decision. That is not something that the planning commission has on its agenda. You don't have anything on your agenda that would allow you to interminally approve other uses because there's no notice to the public of that. In the case of the farmer's market, we will administratively allow them to continue the use of the farmer's market because that is consistent with what we have done with the farmer's market throughout the island. And part of that recognition was that once a farmer's market has established itself in an area, although it didn't have a permit, that in this current economy, to shut down a farmer's market has a greater impact on not just the person who has a permit, the property owner, and meaning violation, but it has an impact that's greater in the community. And it's been our position that while we work through violations and trying to get amendments to permits, that we do not shut down farmer's market as long as they're body-bagging certain hours and they have approved to be a huge traffic issue in the interest of not hurting people's livelihoods. That's why we've allowed them. So what we're doing with Space and the farmer's market there is not better than what we've done with farmer's markets elsewhere on the island. It's kind of a recognition of the current bad state of the economy and the lack of resources that a lot of people have in order to get out and defend their goods. So whatever that you do, whether you decide to continue, dismiss, we will still administratively allow continuance of the farmer's market.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for staff or for the applicant before we entertain a motion? Commissioner O'Neal?
To the staff. I'm here to recommend that the, I would ask for continuance, what on earth? The planning department is recommending that the planning commission continue the revocation hearing to remain in effect as we work through the special permit amendment application. And again, the reason for that is so that if things don't go well, that we can bring it back to the commission and move towards revocation. That's not to say they won't. They have been going well up to this point. The applicant is requesting that the revocation, application be dismissed.
Okay, well, I, ready to entertain a motion. We, so we've got, I think, going just like what Jeff's saying. We have the dismissal of the revocation and the continuance of the special permit. And, you know, just for discussion, Steve? We can discuss it and ask questions, and thank you.
I'd like to put forward the motion to continue the revocation of special permit number one-one-two-two at the call of the planning director.
And continue, continue the special permit.
A continuation of the revocation of the special permit at the call of the planning director.
Okay, in a second. Second. Okay, discussion. Anybody have a discussion about Commissioner Shabbat?
If we defer or remove this revocation, why not? We can bring that back when we vote.
If you continue the particular agenda item which is revocation at the call of the planning director, then if there are additional complaints that occur or something happens or for some reason the special application process stalls, then I can put it back on the agenda. If you dismiss it, then in the event that something were to go awry, if there were evening performances again or something occurred, then I would have to go through, again, an investigation, a notice of violation, and go through that whole process of then initiating the process and the revocation. The reason we asked for just a continuance is that it just holds it in abeyance. We anticipate that the application will probably go smoothly. The only issue right now is timing because of the possibility of having to do a traffic impact analysis report and possibly conferring with traffic engineers in terms of whether there has to be any mitigation. But, you know, it's, it's your decision whether you go with a continuance or whether you need to go with a dismissal.
Question for them? You go ahead first and answer your question. I'll answer your question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Under either scenario, we'd be entitled to some kind of due process. So in the event, let's say that we have a Bob Marley fest out there. While the revocation is still pending, there would be a ton of complaints as I assumed there would be. The director would bring that, the revocation issue back to the planning commission's agenda. We still, there would still be an investigation. We'd still have the opportunity to contest some of those circumstances. Under my, my proposal or my suggestion, it's the same thing. We, in either scenario, we don't get a free pass. We're still held accountable, and there's still going to be an investigation. I just thought it would be easier, just in terms of my perspective, as cleaner as we move past this phase and start the next phase, which is the amended application. And so obviously, from my client's perspective, we're interested in, you know, maximizing our due process because I would hate to think that there is somebody with bad motives out there just for the sake of doing it is going to make a complaint, which would put us right back here on a revocation. So I think there would have to be some kind of, hopefully, some kind of investigation partisan whether somebody files a complaint. That's why my suggestion is to dismiss the revocation. We want the amended permit application. And again, if we do the Bob Marley fest, we'll still be held accountable when the complaints roll in.
So this, our director talked about a possible traffic analysis. I'm assuming it hasn't started yet?
No, and that would be part of the amended permit process.
Okay, so what, what would be the timeframe? You know, I mean, you know, it's like we're dragging this out, we keep coming back, we keep going back, continuing, continuing. You know, I, I like to hold everybody accountable. I want to hold our beloved planning department, you know, to a T as well as the applicant, as well as everybody. Because everybody's your testifying, we're your volunteer, your client. You know, so I just want to know the timeframe. I don't like to leave things open like, okay, whenever we're going to get it done. So like, I mean, you know, does anybody have any comment to that, staff?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, these are, in a sense, separated, right? We have the amendment to the special permit, which is on its own track. The revocation hearing, which is separated, is what we're working on today. So the amended permit will be coming to the planning commission. It's, in, in regards to a timeframe, it's supposed to be within ninety days of when we accept the application. But again, because of this issue regarding the traffic report, usually the, once we have that issue, we ask the applicants to conduct it. They do it, we bring in a timely man. In regards to the revocation hearing, the reason why we're asking for it to be continued isn't because, because we just want to keep it going. We also have other issues in regards to the, what brought us to this place in the first place that have nothing resolved, and that is the unpermitted structures. Although we haven't had any complaints regarding activities, we still have this issue of the unpermitted structures that we need to resolve to feel comfortable to say that we've resolved these issues and have brought us here.
With deference to some of what my staff has said, thinking through all of this, given the fact that the current permit doesn't not allow the performances, you know, and all of that, I do have a hammer. Because I can initiate investigations, notices of violation. And I do have a hammer on the unpermitted structures because if you want to process the special permit application, we're going to have to deal with that. So thinking it over to Mr. Huang as well as staff, I'm going to state that I don't have an objection to dismissing this. And then just the special permit application.
Thank you, Director. As part of the special permit amendment, there are a number of solutions that are emerging to address exactly those things. But we have to let it go through its processes, just like with the traffic report, the unpermitted structures, some of the timing elements related to the farmer's market or even performances. Those things will emerge coming out of this amendment process. But one other component we want to add to that is the community input. They have not had a chance to review this amendment yet and give their input on that. So we want to be able to continue to massage this application that's a win-win for the community and for the applicant, which is a lot of what the director expressed early, early on, is kind of balancing a special permit along with what the community wants.
Thank you. So right now, on the, on the table, we have a motion to, to, a motion to continue the revocation process. That, that's the motion we have. So would Commissioner Kandaz like to amend his motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to withdraw my motion to continue the revocation of special permit number one-one-two-two and put forward the motion to dismiss the revocation of the special permit number one-two.
Okay, well, it's withdrawn, so there's no second needed? Okay, so second. And you'll give it that?
No, I am still, I'm still wanting to, what do you say, your songs are? There's no song to this, but anyway, put to the fire, kind of thing. Keep, keep a timeline in this, so I won't, I don't review the, 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 the. Okay, so the initial motion goes ahead, then?
If you choose. Okay, so that, that same motion is on the floor. Check. Any, any more discussion?
Well, you know, and with Miss Bobby, kind of giving, you know, her, her opinion that she wouldn't have an objection to it, I, I would not have an objection to putting a motion out there, but I'm also fine with this. I mean, we can come back and, depending, we'll say as is for now. I do not have a.
And, and we're in the, I don't know whether to call it the push-me-pull-you or the catch-22, but because we have four, which is the bare, that, you know, if you don't get four votes one way or another, it gets continued anyway because you failed to reach a, a majority vote. So I'm still looking for volunteers out there for boards and commissions.
Hey, Jeff?
I go on comment. Okay, we, okay, but the problem we get now, I mean, we're trying to hold you guys to the fire and make sure you guys follow. That was the message. If you guys accepted that theory and by your actions, you know, we, we, but, yeah, we don't want to catch 22 right now. Either way, we vote. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I'd like to add to that, you know, when you guys came in front of us in May, it was a mess. Buildings everywhere, unpermitted, doing whatever you guys want there, basically. And, you know, these violations occurred, and what Madam Director said earlier, is they need to do what they have to do when, when people complain. You know, if all this was taken care of in the beginning, if you went the normal, you know, you contacted your neighbors first, and then told your neighbors this is what you want to do, then, you know, that's the correct process. So, you know, that's why we wanted to put you guys to the fire, to make sure you guys comply, you guys have it, which is great. Whether or not we take away this revocation process, you guys are doing it anyway, so you guys shouldn't be worried about anybody complaining.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The motion before us is to continue the revocation hearing, we'll keep it open-ended. And with that, I'll take the motion. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Odom?
Aye.
Commissioner Ishibashi?
No.
And Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
The motion does not pass. Three, two, one.
Have you notified, right? So what would be the notification, right? That it's going to be, the, the revocation process is completed?
As we understand it, since the motion failed, this matter could be scheduled for your next meeting in, in January, in which hopefully you have the bodies. But one question I may have is that whenever the commission takes action to continue a hearing, the burden of notification of surrounding property, property owners falls upon the planning department, so that's about the only obligation that I see.
We interpret this as, we had a motion to continue at the call of the director. The motion failed. But I don't know that I have to put this on the next agenda, given the fact that there are other things that we might have been getting to, you know, we're still going to have connections on the next agenda, we're still going to have geothermal on the next agenda. So I would be disinclined to put this on the agenda at any time in the near future because the intent was to put it on the December 6th agenda, specifically to find out what had happened and whether to comply. There has been compliance with the request of the planning commission to apply for special permit. So most likely, we try to put this on the agenda at the same time that the special permit comes forward, so we can deal with it all at one time. I see no sense in having people come for another meeting to, to have another motion to continue. So they want to exercise some discretion over the, the agenda, as long as there's no objections from commissioners on the, to continue.
The applicant has no objections to that either, and to help facilitate the planning permit, we would be more than happy to prepare a, the naming of vehicles and provide that to them so that they can continue whatever necessary with a revocation process is required.
So, so is the commission okay with that?
I'm sorry, what's going on here?
This is going to be continued to some future agenda, but I'm going to exercise some discretion unless I hear objections from commissioners as to when I put it on, because I, I see no reason to have it on next month's agenda. I put everybody through a, an unnecessary process of putting it on agenda to ask for a vote to continue. So I'm just going to hold it off until we actually have the current special use application so that it all, so everybody can come just at one time.
Our commission is okay? So you've notified it, right? And so we're all the neighbors, right away, right, then you permit? Right away, I'll admit. So moving on, ten minutes, okay, moving on to, we have a recess, uh, ten-minute recess.